Mr. Smith, Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank God for that.
Kathleen, can we hear your call, please?
Fleming? Fleming?
Here.
McCambo?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
All right. First on the agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If the discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual: finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have eight resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving final acceptance and release of retention monies for the 2017 West Avenue and West Burlington Avenue Roundabout Rise Project, number RM The third is a resolution approving final acceptance release of retention monies for the 2016 Cascade Watershed Sewer Separation Project Phase 2. The fourth is a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa, and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting services on Arch Street. The fifth is a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa, and Alliant Energy Incorporated for an all-night lighting service on South Fourth Street. The sixth is a resolution to install a stop sign for eastbound and westbound traffic at the intersection of South Gertrude Street and Williams Street. The seventh is a resolution approving reimbursement for the Imagine Committee's indoor sports and recreational facility property acquisition and facility remodel construction effort. Number eight is a resolution approving the change order number 1 to contract number 7329 for the new Law Enforcement Center bid package number 5H VAC Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning with Brockway Mechanical and Roofing Company, Inc. We have some hearings, a public hearing set. The first one is a consideration of a sale of property locally known as 255 South Central Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions on November 6. The second is a consideration of a sale of property locally known as 251 South Central Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions, November 6. The third is a consideration of sale of property locally known as 506 South Gunnison Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions, November 6. Fourth is a consideration of an ordinance prohibiting the construction of wells within the city limits for use of a potable water source, November 6 as well. The sixth, or the fifth, I'm sorry, is a consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 31 Riverfront Advisory Committee of the Burlington Municipal Code, that is, November 6. And the sixth one is a consideration of a designation of the West Avenue Mason Road Urban Renewal Area on Urban Renewal Plan and Project, that is, November 20. And we also have some appointments. Mayor Proton?
We have two appointments, reappointing Mike Edwards to the Economic Development Advisor Committee and Charles A. Walsh to the Riverfront Advisor Committee. Thank you, folks, for serving. We appreciate it.
Well done. If there's anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items from the consent removed, you may do so at this time. Is there anybody from the audience? Lorax. I see none. Counsel?
No. Thank you.
I move to approve all items listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's take the vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
This is time set for hearing for consideration of lease agreement between the City of Burlington and Burlington Community School District for use of Saunderson Park at 1310 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa. Publication has been made the hot guy prescribed. Mr. Tisland?
This is a renewal of an existing lease. We previously had a 20-year lease for the operation of Saunderson Park with the school district that was entered in 1997. That lease is expiring, so we're desiring to enter into a new lease. This, again, is for 20 years. It was discussed, or at least questioned, whether there's interest in selling the property or transferring it to the city or doing a longer-term lease, and they desire to continue with the 20-year term that was previously done under the old lease. The city operates this property, which is owned by the school district as a park, and has done improvements in the past on it and maintains it as a park. It's a valuable asset in the Saunderson Heights neighborhood, and their neighborhood association supports the park and wants to see this continued as well. So this is a lease from the school district with the City of Burlington for 20 years, ending in 2037 for operation or maintenance of this property as a park by the city.
Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? I see none. Counsel?
I'm good.
Good here. Move to close?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second to close. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving lease agreement between the City of Burlington and Burlington Community School District for the use of Saunderson Park at 1310 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Moved in second. Let's decide it by vote. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
As have it. Well done. Ordinances.
Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance in ordinance rezoning Outlet 3 of the Swisher subdivision from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Family Residential Transitional District.
Second.
Moved in second. Thank you. Mr. Tisland?
No changes from previous reading. Again, this is a rezoning of the Park West subdivision. The preliminary plot has been approved for this property, but would allow duplex development within this property as well as single-family. Would not allow anything other than, any residential use other than duplex or single-family, but would allow that flexibility within this area, as shown on the map there, just south of West Avenue. This was approved by the Planning Commission 3-0 with one abstain to recommend approval based on surrounding land use and future land use map.
Any questions or concerns from anybody from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Your Honor, I move to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance in ordinance rezoning Outlet 3 of the Swisher subdivision from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Family Residential Transitional District to read as follows: For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption, the second reading for final adoption of ordinance rezoning Outlet 3, Swisher subdivision, from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Family Residential Transitional District.
Second.
Moved in second. Let's decide this by vote. By vote. Kathleen? I'm sorry, we're voting on the amendment.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
All right.
Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the second reading of ordinance and ordinance amending Section B Land Use Design Criteria of Ordinance Number 3104 for the Burlington Senior Living Campus PUD.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Tisland?
No changes from previous reading. This is rezoning the property locally known as Rosebush Gardens, or amending their existing PUD that was adopted in 1998 to change the front yard setback from 175 feet from the property line to the building line to 30 feet from the property line to the building line, which is consistent with our R1 standards and the R1 designation to the east and west of this property as well.
Comments, questions, or concerns from the audience? I see none. It's been lovely thus far. Counsel?
Your Honor, I move to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending Section B Land Use Design Criteria of Ordinance Number 3104 of the Burlington Senior Living Campus PUD. Read as follows: For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading and for final adoption of an ordinance amending Section B Land Use Design Criteria of Ordinance Number 3104 for the Burlington Senior Living Campus PUD.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote on the amendment.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
All right. Good deal.
Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending Section 126.16 Financial Responsibility of Chapter 126 Taxi Cabs and Vehicles for Hire of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
All righty.
This was a change that really comes from a change in the state code, changed the insurance requirements, took away our ability at a local level to have insurance requirements. We have to make sure that we match the state's level, so this is bringing us in conformity with the state level of required insurance for taxicab companies.
Okay. Anything you want to add, Chief?
No, that's all, Chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from anybody from the audience? Okay, I see none. Counsel?
Your Honor, I move to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending Section 126.16 Financial Responsibility of Chapter 126 Taxi Cabs and Vehicles for Hire of the Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows: For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading and for final adoption of an ordinance amending Section 126.16 Financial Responsibility of Chapter 126 Taxi Cabs and Vehicles for Hire of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote on the amendment.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
All right. Good deal.
Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending ordinances related to designating an area of Burlington, Iowa as Burlington Urban Revitalization Area.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
This area described adds additional property specifically to the urban revitalization area downtown. That's part of the neighborhood development urban revitalization area that's included in the expanded tax payment program downtown. This is designated to add in the Apollo School Site as well as property to the north. The city does own some lots between Valley and Jefferson as well, but this legal description will add that into this area that will be allowed, the tax payment program is part of the neighborhood development area, the 10-year tax abatement program.
Any questions or concerns from anybody from the audience? Anybody that is not named Leon Sheahan?
You can count on my objection to this. What kind of tax incentives or other incentives are being offered for the redevelopment of the school?
All that is being offered is a tax abatement. So this is, when this was, when the building was put up for sale, it was advertised with a TIF, potential for TIF financing to go with it. In a discussion at the council level, it was determined that the tax abatement would be done instead of the TIF, and the purchaser was in agreement with having that as an offset for what we'd advertised.
How much are we talking about?
This is, I'm sorry, Eric, this is a 10-year tax abatement schedule. The first seven years, 100%, eighth year, 75%, ninth, 50%, 10th, 25%, which is similar to what, we've had that on the books. This expands the area that that is for. It also expands the timeframe that is eligible for people to do a project with this incentive there. That was going to expire 2019?
Yeah.
And this extends it through 2023.
Okay, my question is dollar amount. What are we talking about there?
We have no idea. It's whatever somebody does a project for and they have an increased value that meets that abatement schedule.
Once again, I can't say enough how much I think this really screws over the property owners in town that have been keeping their property up. When I look at my own property, generally I have a budget for no more than $2,000 a year for property tax and maintenance. With what I'm getting charged from my home, it leaves damn little for maintenance.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, I see none. We appreciate what you have to say. Counsel?
Here.
Your Honor, I move to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending ordinances related to designating an area of Burlington, Iowa as the Burlington Urban Revitalization Area to read as follows: For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading and for final adoption of an ordinance amending ordinances related to designating an area of Burlington, Iowa as the Burlington Urban Revitalization Area.
Kathleen, let's vote on the amendment, please.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 1114 Linden Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Second.
Mr. Tisland?
We previously held a public hearing on this property on June 5, 2017. We had two bidders at that meeting, and the high bidder, an amount of $600 for Kelly Hull, the property was awarded to her on the condition she met the conditions of the sale, which was to construct a home on the property within 180 days or combine it with adjacent property under her ownership. She does not own adjacent property. She has since emailed and contacted us that she did not want to move forward with it and would like to give a lot to the neighbor. We didn't actually transfer deed because she did not meet the requirements in talking to our attorney. We can sell to the, based on the previous public hearing, to the second highest bidder, which was Christopher Klein in the amount of $500, and so that's what this resolution does. We've already had our public hearing, so we do not need to go through that process again. We can sell to the second highest bidder, which was Christopher Klein.
Is Christopher here tonight? What else needs to be said? That's universal, isn't what I mean? You know what that means? All right. Any comments, questions, or concerns from the audience? Okay. Counsel?
No.
Okay. Kathleen, let's take a vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
I have a resolution authorizing City of Burlington to financially support an application
to the Iowa Finance Authority for the purpose of a homebuyer subrecipient program.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Tisland?
Dan Everhart with Southeast Iowa Regional Plannings here to kind of discuss this program, and I do have a map showing some of the homes in Burlington that previously received benefits under this program as well.
Right. Thank you, Eric. Since the inception of the Great River Housing Trust Fund, in which the city has been very supportive of since 2011, we have done an awful lot of work in the city of Burlington in helping low-to-moderate income households purchase homes. And you can kind of see, kind of in the area of Burlington that we've done this, you'll see up there about 55 homes that has been, had, has received assistance in purchasing their first home. Now, what I'm coming to you today is that the Iowa Finance Authority just recently opened up an additional round of down payment assistance for communities. It actually just opened today and it closes on October 30. So it's a very short timeframe in order to apply for this. We applied for it for the city of Burlington back in 2014, 15, somewhere in that timeframe. And in the last year, we were able to do approximately eight homes through that program, very successful. We're working with a very good banker that helps qualify individuals in purchasing homes for the first time. So it would actually be the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission doing the application, but it will only take place within the city of Burlington, just the way the application works. Very sorry for the very short timeframe in which this was announced. The reason we're coming to you today is if we would wait for the next meeting and I would take this program and explain it to you in the next work session, we wouldn't be able to make the timeframe. So that's why it's being brought to you this evening. But I just want to show you the impact that we've been able to make. The $20,000 will help leverage an additional $375,000 to the city of Burlington, just from the Iowa Finance Authority, and then you'll probably be able to leverage an additional, probably $600,000 to $700,000 from the banks here in the area to help make those loans. So your $20,000 will probably help leverage about a million bucks in helping people make purchases for a minimum of 10 homes. We'll probably try to afford 12, but it's a great program. We've been able to make it work. It's a tough program. A lot of communities, you applied for this last time, weren't able to make it work, but Burlington has. We're one of the very few communities in the state that has. So I think it's a great program and a great opportunity for you to look at, and we'll go from there. There's a 25% local match. Great River Housing Trust Fund is going to supply the bulk of that match. We're just asking for $20,000 help from you folks. And then that helps people get in their home. That's a lot of investment for those folks to own that home. We see people that come in at our office that are paying $700, $800 a month in payment and monthly rents. They get into this and their, you know, their payments are about $450 a month. Really helps those folks out. And that gets into homeownership, which to me is a great thing.
Amen.
And I think they take a lot more ownership within the city of Burlington in their own property. So that's what we're here for.
It is, yeah.
Thank you. Next, Dean?
$20,000 is an unbudgeted amount. We typically would use money that's in our housing demo fund to cover this. Eric has spent all our housing demo fund and then some on the care center. That demo project, the bids were much higher than what was hoped for when we originally went into it. That being said, it cleans up a problem property. On the backside, they are looking to be able to resell those lots. My guess is that he won't have those resold in this fiscal year. So that fund is already looking, absent doing something else, having a deficit account balance at the end of this fiscal year. So this adds to that problem. However, one of the things that Nick has been able to do on the transit side, he has two buses he was looking to purchase in this budget cycle. When we did the original budget, we were anticipating being awarded grant funds from the state for 80% of one of those. He has been awarded 80% of both of those. So the match on the two buses we're looking to purchase, that we were looking to cover out of local option sales tax, instead of needing the $216,000 of local option sales tax funds, it's going to be closer to $80,000 that we're going to need for that. My recommendation is to move about $100,000 of that savings to the housing demo fund to make sure that we don't end up with a deficit account and provide the $20,000 that Dan's needing for a match on this grant.
Sounds reasonable.
Sounds phenomenal.
Yeah.
Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? Okay. Counsel?
What a good program. Good going, guys. Good going.
Yeah, anytime we can get some savings and be able to work, this is a two for, as far as I'm concerned. You guys good then?
Yes.
All right. Kathleen, let's do it.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Yes.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving an application for funds from the Iowa Great Place Grant of the Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs for projects along the downtown riverfront. Second.
Thank you. Mr. Tisland?
It's just a brief summary of what was discussed at the work session. There is funding available through the Iowa Great Places Program. It is due November 1. It is competitive. We have three cycles to apply for funds. Based on projects through the downtown riverfront, visioning, the auditorium, event garden, shade structures, and splash pad were the three items that Charlie brought forward as options for the application. Looking at those three, the budget costs for them were $202,000 for the auditorium, event garden, $120 for shade structures, and $243,000 for splash pads. Based on the grant, local match amount, that would equate to $41,000 for the auditorium, event garden, $25,000 for shade structures, and $50,000 for the splash pad. Are able to apply for multiple projects under those, from those three that were submitted. As a recap from the Facebook poll, splash pad was 52.3% of respondents, shade structures 11.8, and amphitheater seating 29%. Are using some of the existing rehab money from the riverfront to bring the, I guess, bring the area back to the green space and landscaping down there, but the local match required is to make the application competitive and something we feel that needs to be done. So any questions on cost or other items there?
Where are we getting the match funds? Can you clarify that for me?
What you'll end up having to do is, well, we would, if you were awarded the grants, we would be looking to build in the match out of next year's probably hotel motel tax projects. That, we already had allocated that towards a tentative list of projects for next year, but we'll just have to adjust around what we're doing. You know, some of it is mentioned, like with the local option sales tax, or maybe a tad left over there that we're not using, and we may, in the next cycle, if you were to do this, just try to figure out where we can fit in projects.
All right, and so what's the timeframe for when this would be actually constructed?
I think you probably have two years.
Yeah.
Is my guess on the timeframe for the grant. You're going to be, get an announcement in the spring, and then you're going to be building it into either FY '19 or FY '20 budget.
So the wall itself is scheduled to be done by June of next year?
This first phase.
And so then this could fit in as soon as that wall is completed?
Correct.
That's my, I understand that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is a competitive grant, so it would be judged up against others in the...
Other Great Place communities.
And then what, what are they looking for, for Great Place communities?
I think part of it's an impact on the community, what, they want to spend their money wisely, what's going to have an impact?
What would have more of an impact on the community?
Yeah.
Yes, and I thought that, too. You know, and we had our discussion, but I just don't see how shade structure is going to have much of an impact on the community. And as far as the amphitheater, I guess when we talk about, like, I mean, I hope things work out with the auditorium, but when we're talking about changes down there, if anything changed, and then we built that auditorium down there, you know, I am, I just think and then we built that auditorium down there. But, you know, I am, I just think the splash pad's much better. I think it would, it, it's for young people, the community, it doesn't cost anything for the children to use it. And I just felt, I've had a lot of people say something to me about it, that they felt that, that they were ignored, that they voted and said they wanted the splash pad and, and it was just not considered. So I think we need to reconsider the splash pad.
What is their liability on that kind of, an outdoor thing like that? Like, I know, like, parks have the same sort of, but this is, you know, water feature...
You're gonna, I mean, it's going to be part of our overall liability insurance coverage, but I don't know where it fits within the indemnification that's offered for recreational activities. I assume it falls under that level of indemnification for other activities that the state provides.
Would it be any different than what we had down there before, as far as a liability? The fountain and, I mean...
It'd be different from the fountain.
Of course, it never, that water feature never did work hardly, but...
Only major difference, there's no standing water, I guess, from that aspect. There's not going to be someone there. But reading, just to clarify from Great Places, it says the program provides designation and supports development of new and existing infrastructure intended to cultivate the unique and authentic qualities of neighborhoods and areas. So that's kind of the goal of the program.
I don't, I don't know that the, the shade structures themselves versus a splash pad is going to be the deciding factor so much for that. The Great Places designation in general, us receiving that was based on having a vision for the area, but the specific projects within that, after having been identified as being some of the different things that could potentially make that structure. Once it's been identified in that overall plan to begin with, I think it's more about what their funding availability is and what we're doing for a match.
Yeah.
But it is competitive. I mean, I guess, you know, if you bring a grant forward and ask for a shade structure and it's competitive, against other communities that might be asking for something that would do more for the community, I just wonder if we could get it if we're asking for a shade structure. Because I don't know what that does economically for us or what it does, you know, I, I don't know.
See, the way I'm looking at it is that we're not desperate for any of it. I was under the understanding that we fill out the paperwork and so that when it does come around, that we've got the option. But, you know...
Well, I'm okay with that. I just don't want to rule out, early on, I guess, the splash pad.
So when, when...
We're not ruling anything out, are we?
I thought we already ruled, I thought we ruled that out last week.
No.
Whatever you apply for is what you apply for. You don't get to apply for, someone asked earlier if you could apply for three, be awarded funding, and then choose two. You can't do that. You gotta, whatever you apply for is what you, what your application is for this cycle. It doesn't keep you from the next two cycles applying for a different set of projects.
But we could change what we want to apply for tonight.
Yes, you certainly can.
And then I guess I would like to ask for that consideration.
That's, that's one person that's looking at the consideration. Is there a consensus here on that?
Do you want to hear what the audience has to say?
Why don't we do that? You're a good man, Charlie Brown. Not everybody at once. One at a time, please. And I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you that we don't get redundant with this, but we want to make sure everybody gets a chance if you're here to speak. So if it's okay, I'll ask Charlie to join me. We sit on the Riverfront Advisory Committee together, if that's okay?
Come on down.
I'm Matt Rinker, 912 Higginman Avenue. I'll let Charlie introduce himself.
Charlie, Wall 1619, River Street, Chairman, Riverfront Committee.
So I guess first off, you have kind of me to thank for this predicament. It was my idea. I sat on the Riverfront Steering Committee when we put these plans together. And I remember specifically sitting here and putting a board together of all the different things we'd like to see on the riverfront. And I wish I still had a picture of that. I did take it, but after the fact, even with everybody that was in this room, splash pad was number one on that board. I would pose one question to the council is, can anybody name one thing that you guys are doing today to draw kids to downtown? Anything?
We've got a lot of events, but...
Sure.
That's not a really valid question, Matt, because this isn't just the only thing we do all year.
I would agree. There are events that take place, but there's no fixed objects in downtown that we're using to draw kids to the downtown. And when we put the plan together, you can take a look at it up there, we did it with them, keeping in mind, we're trying to draw people to the downtown, okay? I, I'm standing before you tonight, I'd like to see the council apply for all three projects, because it draws in different parts of our community for different reasons, whether, whether it's an outdoor auditorium space, or it's a splash pad, or shade structure. Different people are going to come for different reasons. And the other reason that I'm standing up here is, when I look at this project, I say that as a community, we have the ability to maximize our dollars, okay? So I look at it this way. If you buy a house and it needs a new roof, and it needs a new air conditioning unit, but you can't do both in the same year, but the roof needs to be replaced first, but right before you replace the roof, somebody shows up and says, listen, you can replace your air conditioning unit for 20% of the cost that it will cost you next year, you would reconsider and reprioritize what you're going to do. That's what this grant gives us the ability to do. So I look at the potential for projects like this, think about all the different pictures and magazines that are going to take place of kids running around on our riverfront in a splash pad, or people enjoying time, reading a book underneath shade structures, or events taking place in an outdoor auditorium space. We have the ability to make that happen tonight. So I would strongly encourage you and hope that you would consider applying for all three projects and then let the next council work on how to fund those projects. Charlie, do you have anything to add?
I'd kind of go along with what Matt is saying. We've talked about it at the Riverfront Committee, and we felt that the river is our biggest asset to the Burlington area. And it's in our backyard, and we do not take advantage of it. Applying for all three, I think, is a smart way to go. Like Matt said, you have the ability to pick and choose which one comes first. The people ask for, this is the decision that all three were approved by the general public. And I don't see how you can pick and choose which one. So go for it all. Thank you.
One thing I would like to add is with regard to the splash pad, I know that there's been a poll, which obviously was largely in favor of the splash pad. I personally have spoken to four different nonprofits that operate in our community, and of those four, they have all shown a willingness to contribute on an annual basis to help cover the cost of that splash pad, at least the maintenance. Also, I've done a lot of research. I spoke to Nick quite a bit. I spoke to Charlie quite a bit, and I called a bunch of different communities. And just try to get an idea, you know, we talk about operating costs. The biggest reason that the operating cost for the fountain was so much is because it's quarantined water and you have a holding pool, which puts a ton, a ton of wear and tear on an object. With the splash pad, you don't have that. You can purchase completely enclosed systems that don't hold water, which reduces the cost of those systems dramatically. Of the two different communities I spoke to, they had an average of about $8,000 annually for maintenance costs for newer splash pad units that didn't hold water. So I just want to throw that information out there. Hopefully you guys can make that statement.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Any questions for Charlie?
We're good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, guys.
Mike Elmer, 620 Iowa Street, Burlington, Iowa. I'm going to be devil's advocate here. I've listened to the shuffling of funds to cover different things that aren't in the budget. All of these projects are nice, but I think the splash pad, if I'm not mistaken, received 1,000 votes as the top winner.
I think it was 500 out of 1,000. Is that right, Eric?
Yeah.
Right. That even amplifies my point. It's a community of 25,000 plus people. So a small minority is what's actually voted on this. We have priorities in this city that aren't in the budget, that need to be taken care of. This is a nice thing, but is now the time to apply for that. And do we, as a community and as taxpayers, have the money to pay for these things now? If I'm not mistaken, we had up to three years to apply for these from the last meeting. Why do we have to do it now? Is my question. We have to have priorities here, where our money goes. And like I said, we've already heard how we're going to shuffle this to pay for that, and this isn't in the budget. And these are nice things. And at some point in time, I think it'd be nice to have on the riverfront. But is now that time?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike.
Hi, my name is Christina Robinson, and I'm a...
Address, too, please.
Oh, address, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I know this. Um, please say your name and address.
I need your address.
My address?
Yes.
Oh.
You have to give your name and address, sorry.
1200 Osborne, Burlington, Iowa. Me being a mother of multiple children, sometimes you're not, Fun City's not affordable. It just isn't. Like, I can't take my kids to Fun City, and I can get, um, I used to get city things to Dankworth, and God, you guys kept that open, because that's more affordable for me and my children. But there's something like that. I could walk downtown, take my kids to that, they can play in that. With the, um, me and my friends attended an outside concert in Peoria this past summer, and it was down by the riverfront. And my friend who actually lives in Peoria was like, that's not all they do. They, they bring in concerts every weekend. They have some kind of event every weekend. So when I was in the council meeting last week, I was like, if we got, I was like, wow, like, we could have something where they could throw these festivals or events every weekend, and it can bring the money in every weekend. So if you did do both, like Matt said, wouldn't the money from the concerts kind of offset the cost it would cost to run the splash pad? I think both would be amazing for adults and for children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Took you a while to get the address right, but after that, you were smooth sailing. All right.
John Phillips, 800 North Front. I think, if I remember at the work session, wasn't the purpose of the grant was to apply and then to do our best effort to make it happen? Wasn't that, I thought that, we're not guaranteeing that we're going to do it. It's if we can get a match, we're going to do our best to make it happen. Is that correct?
Yeah, but you should have, you should, we should have a pretty strong intent to fulfill it if we're doing it.
I think your, I think your intent is proven. If you've looked at the fountain for the last, however many years it's been there, you can't keep kids out of it. You know, every, every Saturday, Sunday, weekdays, you go down there, kids are in it. We had to put in a ordinance, hey, you're not supposed to get in the pool. And guess what? They're still down there anyway. Not the pool, but the fountain. So I think that if you were, one, the maintenance costs would be less than the fountain. We had a brilliant example earlier in tonight's meeting about how you leverage money and be able to afford some of these amenities that we want. I really think we're missing the boat here, so to, so to speak, if we don't go with the one that the public voted on. And I would say that that survey, although it was on Facebook, wasn't very well published or advertised that we were having. I had, I think your response would have been even greater if more people do that survey was out there. So I, the splash pad is definitely number one. That's, that's the, be the attraction downtown. I really, I agree with Becky. I think we ought to look at doing that first and foremost. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
Gary McPherson, 2111 Summer Street. And I didn't even know what a splash pad was. So I looked it up on my phone, and Des Moines has four of them. And a comment is made on the, just a few minutes ago, that they are staffed. Would these have to be staffed?
No.
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 Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Was there somebody else that?
Tim Scott, 2017 South 15th Street. I'm surprised that, I was surprised that the splash pad was even on the Facebook and was an option, because it was made perfectly clear by a majority of the council that we were not interested in putting the splash pad in down on the riverfront because of the ongoing annual cost. And in fact, we were finding it difficult to fund many of the activities throughout this community as it is. The, the comparison of the, the fountains and comparing the costs, I think, I really think we're talking apples and apples. But the maintenance, anytime you have running water, anytime you have pumps, you've got maintenance cost, and they're high maintenance cost. And the success of this, of underground water lines for entertainment has not been the best in this community. And I talk from experience. Stone Gardens, in their redevelopment, put in a splash pad. They had it one season. The, at the end of the season, when frost got in the ground, it ruined every one of the underground pipes. And then Fun City had many, many water lanes underground, and they froze and, over, over a winter. And they had considerable maintenance cost, huge maintenance cost. And if it's not done, if it's not done right, and even if it's done right, we're still, you're still going to experience some, some broken water lines. I don't know what you're going to give up if you do fund this. And I don't, you're going to have to give something up, because it's, it's going to be an ongoing annual cost, even if there is no maintenance. You're still going to have water that's going to have to be supplied. You're still going to have to have electricity for the pumps. And, and if you go with a, if you go with a one that doesn't have its own water supply in storage, then you're going to have to go with a continual water supply, and that's going to increase the cost, because we, the city does have to pay the water department for, for water. And then the chemicals for, for maintaining, either way, is, is going to be considerable. And you can ask our folks that run the pool what those, what that annual cost is. It's not going to be a lot different. But again, it just surprises me that it was even considered as, as part of the survey, when a majority of the council had indicated well before that, on two separate occasions, that they did not want to consider splash pad. And then I, I think one of the biggest things for me is, I don't even think that, that we've ever, the council's ever approved a, a plan for that, for the, for the riverfront. The only thing that's been approved is the expenditures for the, for the seawall. And, and there's, there's a lot of things that's got to go on down there after that wall goes up, that's extremely expensive. And that's the pump houses to, to pump the water back into the river that, that ends up on the wrong side of the, of that seawall. And those are the things that we should be considering first before we consider the niceties. And I, I know, we've had a parking plan that, that says that the, the, there's a better use for that riverfront than parking, that nobody uses it. Try to find a parking space between the Port of Burlington Building and, and the north, or the south both ramps on any workday of the week. It's packed. You'll, you'll find that you have to walk a distance. And I'll leave it at that. I don't, I don't think the plan has been real, well thought out. And I'm a little agitated that, that, that the council's been put in the position that they've been put in when they were told, when staff was told, we didn't want to deal with the splash pad.
Thank you, Ken.
Anybody else prefer, yes?
Dustina Fenton, 918 North Central. I just have to say that I agree with him on the fact that I think that all these projects could probably be on hold. There's a lot of unfinished product, or projects already going on in Burlington right now. Our water bills are raising it every three months. I mean, all the time. There, it's always, you're getting a letter in the mail, the water bill's going up, the water bill's going up. So if we put in a splash pad, which I am not, you know, say and take it totally out of the water, okay? What if we open up our minds and say, maybe we move the splash pad? I understand everybody's, you know, focused on this downtown thing. But what if we move the splash pad out to somewhere like Dankworth Park, to where, you know, kids do come? Or by the Dankworth Pool. Dankworth Pool needs attention really bad. Another thing that I want to say, too, is, you know, cat, that, then that would involve, obviously, Cascade Bridge. There'd be, you know, there's tons of bridges in town. Mount Pleasant Bridge right now needs attention, like, right now. So for us to put money into projects that, and we already have all these unfinished products, or projects, does not seem to be, you know, sufficient to any of us. So I really would like to know, you know, how, how much that our water bills are going to change, the taxes. What are we going to do about STEMO days, whenever you guys put all this down there? Is STEMO day is going to go away? Are you going to move STEMO days? What are our plans for STEMO days? Are we going to keep them or not? There's a lot of things that, you know, that have, we have to open up to and try to think about before we think about all these other things. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Devenese, 2117 Northern Drive.
With your Cubs hat and your hot eye polo.
Yeah, Cubs fan. I'll always be a Cubs fan. I know there are bad times, but I always would be a Cubs fan, right? Basically, about this. I can't, I'm out, I've pretty much about it. I don't got a computer, have a survey. But my problem is, she is right. We got all this stuff in this town that needs to be fixed, and we're going to spend all that money on that, and water bill's going through the roof. And my, I said this before, my stepmother is on, she gets social security, and every time it turns around, her water bill goes up and up and up. I know it's not some of your fault, it's the federal government. But this is right here. And she talked about, yes, I was going to keep, I was going to wait till it on. We got Cascade Bridge. We got Cascade Bridge. We can even fund that. And that goes into... And that goes into that big park. I said before, I went there once, five cars showed up. And we need that bridge, because that's a beautiful park. And, and I think if we had a bridge, that will do a good purpose. I mean, I hate to be a Grinch.
Well, then don't be a Grinch, Dean.
But not that long ago, not that long ago, we didn't have the money. We were near bankruptcy, weren't we? We didn't have the money for anything. We didn't have the money to put on, to put your little river on Sunnyside Street where that guy complained about. And also another thing, another thing. If you built this, you're going to make the water go to the railroad depot. Now, how are we going to paint the railroad depot on that street? Big muddies. I, and that's private business, I know. But they're going to give fuck at hire. If I'm a businessman, I would say, I'm not going to do it no more. I'm going to let it stay vacant. See, that's, that's what I'm talking about. I mean, it seems like we should first do their priority, what need, what she said, what needs to be fixed in this town. I mean, it's just, that looks nice. But it's just, do we want to have, go in debt again? Do we have the money to pay for all of this?
Yeah.
And see, that's the question. Now, that's it for now. So...
All right. Don't get worked up, and don't turn into a Grinch now, Dean. I don't need that. Okay. Is that everybody from the audience then? Have one more?
My name is Rebecca Rosales. I'm at 102 Melrose Court in Burlington. Sorry, this is my first time. I just moved here two months ago, and there's a lot of things here that I noticed that really need attention. One, the main thing, streetlights. There are hardly any streetlights in this town. There is major crime where there are no streetlights, to include myself. I was robbed two months living here. My little girl was robbed. My other daughter, robbed. Credit cards, checkbooks, every little thing they work for, gone. My little daughter that's medically handicapped, and that's the only reason why we moved to Iowa, to get her medical, for an, there's no cure for her disease, which is this. Absolutely no cure. She will never be cured for this. But I came here for treatment in Iowa City. They took all of her stuff and her bag, got rid of it, tried selling her bag, for drug reasons, tried selling her bag, because somebody's smoking marijuana or doing their heroin or whatever they're doing, was more important than a sick child. That really upsets me. The, you know, the people, the whole community has got to come together. We've all got to help the police department. You know, there's, there's not enough of them, they need us. And if they're, you know, you see people on Facebook writing all these bad things about them? No, we need to stick together as a community. We need to come together. This is beautiful, this is not going to work right now. There's too many other things in this community that people need. And the first one I would say is streetlights. More police patrol? You know, we got to make this town safer for everybody. And I've lived through a city that just went through, it was mine at North Dakota that I just moved from, and you can check the statistics on that. 2011, a flood hit. 2010, big oil boom, North Dakota. Our water became rancid, you could turn it on fire with a lighter. We had all kinds of contamination in the water, the city covered it up. I brought it out to the public. You know, this is, I don't want to see this town go the same way that town did, where in three years, they crash. All of a sudden, everybody's taxes this year went up 27% to cover the cost of what's going to cost the city to run the city, because they didn't know how to manage the money, and because they weren't listening to the people. And yes, although that's beautiful, there are many things in this town that need to be done first. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Council?
I have comments, because you asked why now. I think a lot of people look at the funding from the city, I guess when, when I became a, when I got to understand the budget, I realized that different funding is designated for different things. And the funding that would be designated for this could not go for police. I mean, we're not affecting, we're not affecting the police funding by doing this.
Yes and no. I mean, hotel motel, we don't use towards that. We use it to cover other projects within the rec, within recreation.
And we've never used it for policing.
But it, but it does impact potentially what we do for general fund or, I mean, we're not going to, you are correct, we're not going to use this for police.
Okay. And that's what I mean. As far as I know, it would not be used for police funding. And I understand, and, and I read about your daughter on Facebook, so, you know, I, yeah, broke my heart, you know? But I do think that we need things in this community that attract and keep young families here, and I guess that's how I feel about this, because young families living and working here will pay taxes and will buy houses. And to me, I look at how, th- these kinds of project are very leveraged, and the amount of money the city puts in and the amount of money we are getting for grant money, it's, it's very leveraged. And I guess I also look that, that it's something that leverages us, our economy and helps our economy. So, the amount for the splash pad, what was the dollar amount on that?
$243,000 in total.
And then, but that's not what we are paying.
$50,000 local match, $193,000 grant.
And I, and I guess to say why now, I guess because when we, I know we started talking about the riverfront, we talked about that at that time then, things would change on the riverfront, and to look into funding, you know, that would change, that we could do those things. And that's why, that's why now. And I think that's why we became designated as a great place, and Charlie looked at funding for things like this. And so, to me, that's the question of why now.
I just want to say that, to me, there's nothing worse than, this is where I stand on it, I stand the same. We're going to, we're going to move through this one, but I don't believe in starting something that you can't finish. To me, there's nothing worse. There's nothing worse than starting something, then you, you see it down the road, and it's, and you can point to stuff, whatever. But we don't know the future. The one thing that we guarantee about the future is the prices of things are going up, you know? And that's one thing that everybody knows, and it's been reiterated in this room. To me, if we're going to be doing things downtown, we need to be looking at things that are sustainable, things that we don't have to worry about sticking a whole lot of money into or manpower into. Those are the things that we should be looking at. Why? Because down the road, it's going to be more and more things that are going to come up that are going to cost us money. And there's, there's, that's another thing, that's a, that's a guarantee, is that water bill? You know, that has nothing to do with the city of Burlington. That's federally mandated that we do that. It's, there's no getting around it. They got us in a headlock locked up. They've got us cuffed. It's a rap. It's a rap. So, again, I want these things, I think they're nice, but I feel like this, we haven't really figured out exactly how this is going to look, how this is going to work. We're still not sure what's going to happen with the auditorium, if there's going to be changes there. We're still not sure how this is going to work with, how this is going to go with the flow of the downtown, and with the lack of parking and, and that sort of thing. So, to me, you start busting up ground and laying in stuff like that, that's, it's a done deal. I mean, concrete is unforgiving, you know, it's, it's a rap. So, I still feel the same. I love the kids, I'm all about the kids. You know, I was all for the pool. I've got a bad feeling about this, and I've got a, I've got a vote, just so that I know that when I lay my, my head down on the pillow, that I did the best, that not through somebody else pushing me, that I, that I feel like this is the best decision. And to me, going forward thinking, I don't feel comfortable with it. To be honest with you, I don't feel comfortable with really moving too further past the design. What, I'd like to see how things are going to go once we get this flood wall up. I'd like to get a, like to get a feel of it, I'd like for the community to get comfortable with it. This is all new. So, there is three years, again, everybody's got their own thing. I'm not saying that I'm right and everybody's wrong. This is how I feel, so I want you to know about it. I, I don't feel comfortable with it. I still don't know how we're going to do this, and I know that parking's an issue now, and by taking up all that space, it's just going to make things worse. As far as I'm concerned, I could go without any of it for this year deciding. So, I'm going to vote the same way. Anybody got anything else to add on that?
Only in the fact that you, everybody knows where I feel. I've never been in favor of the splash pad for a number of reasons, and I think Mr. Scott is right, we had never approved a design for that area. And so, I'm, I'm not going to vote to add the splash pad in for those reasons. And I agree with you, Mayor. We don't know what that area's going to look like. This is not the only time that we have an opportunity to do this. If we decide sometime in the future, hey, that'd be great, then we can do it.
Well, that's my concern, though. We made the commitment to the flood mitigation, and part of that, and you see what other communities have done, the wall itself functionally is the key part, obviously, to keep, keep from flooding. But then, what you can do as far as beautifying the area, that's a long-term investment for a community. And again, the river is one of our top functions or features, if you will. Now, maybe we can't do this now, and I, I can accept that. But I sure hope that we look forward to someday developing that area and that flood wall to take advantage of this huge investment. I mean, it's, to, to sit back and say, well, we're not going to do anything because we have bills to pay, but we're always going to have bills to pay. But beautifying this city is critical. And if we want this, people complain that we're not getting any increase in population, but that's true. But we're not going to ever get it if we don't try to improve things, beautify things, and make things more attractive to people. End of speech.
For the, the grant schedule, it's, is it yearly, or is it, is it something else? I just wasn't quite sure. We never, it was, for every year, this will come back for three? This is our first time to...
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. That's, that's a tough one. I definitely want all three items. I remember playing in our little water feature when we first had it down there, not the fountain. And I always thought that, you know, I have a picture of me and the Hawkeye playing in it. And, you know, it was, it's fun, it's amazing. Kids love those things, and families love letting their children play in water features like that. I think all three of the items are very important. I, I guess I have a question. We have three times to apply for these, do we have plans for applying for other projects besides these three? Or is it just these three for this?
There's, there was a list of five project, it was, projects that were put forward, and the reason those five were chosen weren't necessarily a, a staff decision. The Vision Iowa, or not Vision Iowa, the Great Places, you had to have this come out of a plan.
Yeah.
That had been presented.
Okay.
The only plan that we had was the presentation that was done, the, for the flood wall itself, that had some different concepts for how this space could be used. So, it had to have come out of that design process, that the only projects that were eligible to be considered were things that were part of that. So, when Charlie presented those five and went to the, the public, it wasn't necessarily just what the council's reaction was to it, it was based off of the, the amount of flexibility that there was for consideration even to be presented, letting the, the public then put their input into it, and then the council making the decision. Yes, you'd already expressed your thoughts about the, the, those elements, but it's, that was the amount of flexibility we had. And it gives you a little bit more data point, just for being able to have some input from the public to make a decision based off of. So, next time around, it doesn't have to be these two or three, but it does have to be something that was in that original plan.
Right. Okay. So, I guess that kind of, no, whatever, what we decide...
Eric, did you have something else?
It, it does require the 50% match. We are using the rehab work that we're putting the riverfront back to as part of our match.
Next year, that won't be there.
That won't be there, so we'll have to come up with additional funds. Right now, our local match is 20% or so, so we're going to have to come up with an additional 30-plus percent to...
Yeah.
Even apply.
So, that's the question of why the timing's right now? Because we can...
Timing is right now.
We're using that 400,000 of that restoration money as part of our local match. We do have to have 50% local match. We're using a smaller city local match, and then leveraging those state funds as part of it.
And the question could be asked, why aren't we using that for all of our match? Well, the, the state isn't going to look at that favorably. They wanted to see us have some level of funding put in, into it.
So, I guess for me, that's, it's, it's almost a now or never, as far as what kind of a good deal we're going to get.
Pricing.
Yeah. And would, of course, that's, I am very torn with the splash pad. You know, I have a child.
It's not, it's not a deal if we end up paying for it later. I'm just saying, just because it's cheap, or just because it's now, does it make it good? But we're, I'm going to, we're going to, we're going to move on that one, because I think we're ready to, I think we've heard, we know where you guys stand. Are, are we ready to vote on this then?
Well...
What are we voting on?
If you want to change it, you have to move to amend the resolution to include the splash pad, if you want to change it. Am I correct?
But then I'm including for all three of them?
Or, so how? Or, because I don't agree for all three of them, I would be...
You can move, you can move anything you want.
Well, then I, I would make a motion that we change it to just doing the splash pad.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
And then we'll have to...
Kathleen?
Bring it back if we want to say this goes no, we'll have to bring it back.
We've got to vote...
Well, this is just, you're just voting on the amendment right now.
Oh.
This is just for splash pad only. Yes. Fleming?
Aye.
McCam, McCampbell?
It's McCampbell. We've only been working together for six years, but...
Campbell?
No.
Wilson?
No.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
No.
Darn.
Okay.
Did you want to have a different amendment to that?
Somebody offer a different amendment, yeah.
What else do you have? I mean, what's the, what's the other one? The only thing, the only other one that would be offered is what?
You could add, give that all three.
All three, if you want to do that.
Yeah, but...
I don't see how that's going to pass when it's already been said no on the splash pad.
No, no, maybe, because I voted no, because I don't want just the splash pad.
Yeah, because I really would like to see the amphitheater.
I'm, I'm not saying I will vote.
Right.
Few rascals, so...
So, I, I guess I would move to this resolution to include all three projects.
Second.
Moved in second.
So, somewhere, if I can, am I allowed to comment on that?
Before we vote?
Yeah, Kathleen?
Mm-hmm.
Somewhere you have to come up with $116,000 now, if, if we get approved. Now, the whole thing is based on...
Right. Yeah, we may not get the grant.
And so, what that, and what it would do this next year in the CIP planning process, he'd probably set aside the 116,000, and it, and it impacts not just what you do for projects out of hotel motel, and that's where it does have an impact on other funds. A lot of this stuff that we do out of hotel motel also has the potential to be funded out of local option sales tax. So, as you start mixing and matching around projects out of those, it also, we do a transfer from there to subsidize the general fund as well.
Correct, yeah.
So, it just, it does all have a trickle-down impact, it's, but that has to be determined where that all fits, fits out when we get into the next budget cycle.
So, we've got an amendment up on the, on the table, all right, for all three. So, let's go ahead and vote on the amendment.
Okay. Fleming?
No.
McCampbell?
Uh, yeah, on the amendment.
Yes?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Anderson?
So, we're, you're voting for all three?
Yes.
Are we voting on, I'm confused, okay?
The motion is to vote, you're amending it for all three. Gosh.
It's yes or no. It's got, you know, so, how are we going to play this out, guys?
Well, let him finish voting.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
I know, I'm kind of, I'm surprised. You said you're, you're in favor of all three?
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm voting yes on the amendment.
Okay, to make the amendment. Okay, that's what I was wanting to clarify.
Right on.
Okay, yes on the amendment. So yes, to make the amendment? Mm-hmm. Yes.
Davidson?
No.
This is really getting exciting. Take a bath and go.
Holy cow.
Okay, so now we're going to vote on the motion as amended with all three.
How many, what was, what was the vote on as amended? Three to two?
Three to two.
All right, okay. All right, here it is as amended for the, all three projects.
Fleming?
No.
McCambe?
No.
Wilson?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Davidson?
No.
All right.
So we have no project to apply for.
No, no, we don't. And it doesn't bother me. We got, I think, I think we need to slow down a little bit. I think we'll be all right. But anyways, that's where we're at, so, okay.
Sorry, Eric.
At this time, I'm going to ask everybody to, we haven't dismissed yet, so please be courteous. If you want to have some side conversations, the hallway's out there. We appreciate that. If there's anybody that has a comment from the audience something we haven't covered tonight, this is your time. I'm going to ask you to be pithy, if possible. I've got a doctor's appointment. I got to get my, my ears checked.
Okay. My name is Dean Finacy, I live in Northern Dravlin, Burlington, I'm an oratorium. Okay, there's three things, and I do want to make this quick because I want to go eat my dinner. Number one, about the oratorium, it's beautiful inside, it's deco, it's nice, but the problem is, it's basically, you can go to the mark, it's twice as big, and entertainers can bring their bus and their material in, parking inside. The one here, the problem is they can move their semi up. I remember about, oh, 10 years ago, they had an art of Brooks and Dunn, he showed 15. They had two buses for Brooks and Dunn, two for their band, and about five or 10 semis. Now, it's also because ever since we sat in Las Vegas, you're going to have to pay for a lot more security, and that's going to be expensive. And also, a lot of these entertainers want to get paid big, 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 big bucks.
Because they're greedy, Dean.
Well, yeah, but I'm, I'm being honest. I mean, I go to Thrashers, I told you this. And about 12 years past, I asked them, can you have Brooks and Dunn? We have a MAGA tire. That's your street. These save for one show cost around $2,000, $3,000. It'll be nice, we, you get to have his music, I think that's all you're going to get, but you're right, reality is, we'll never have a thing called the mark. We cannot afford it, it'd be too expensive, the only place you could build is out the business park, only unless somebody gets super rich, or like Wayne Guardo and Trump give some money for it. But no, we'll never have a thing like that. Okay, about what happened two weeks ago, I tried to keep up with the news about the pier, about the shooting. We need police. Some police, let's face it, they make mistakes. Some are crooked and some are show disrespect. But most police are good, decent, honest, and they care about their, they care about their neighborhood, they care about their city, and most is. But the problem in today's news, once you hear about a shooting, I won't say the race, I don't want to get in trouble. But you, you talk about a shooting, everybody thinks, oh, the cops are all crooked, you know, they're, because they hate me, because you know, but that's not true. We like to blow things out of proportion. And I support the police, but they, sometimes they have to use force to protect themselves. I mean, if we didn't have police, we would have chaos, barbariness. I'd rather have police protecting us from those, from that. One more thing, I was going to my bank on the excess road where Northern Dame is, then people are parking on that street. I had a guy parked right there, and the other peer parking like toward this way, and there was a car coming this way, and we had to go like this, and somebody could get in a real bad accident. So either somebody at City or Police to ask Notre Dame to tell their parents, please do not park on this road, or give them tickets, because that's really not fair to us. That's a street, that is not a parking area. And all I got to say, may the Lord Jesus Christ be with you, peace be with you, and keep warm. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Finacy. Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Mr. Shanahan? I'm starting to get cold out, I'm surprised you didn't wear the Fonzie jacket, but go ahead.
That's way too much.
All right.
Leon Shanahan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I'm not going to belabor what we were talking about earlier, but on the riverfront improvements, I think in a lot of ways, you're in over your head. The whole project really hasn't been fleshed out, but I keep hearing rumors, and I see on the Chambers website now where they want everybody to have flood protection to the 500-year flood level, under the assumption that that's the worst that it can get. We need to talk, before we start spending the money that we've already started to, we need to look at, okay, what is a 10,000-year flood? What is a 100-year, 100,000-year flood? There's a risk for that. And work back from that, what is the greatest risk? A lot of people don't know it. When you crest that hill going toward Wapala, the reason that valley's so big, that used to be the Mississippi River. Mississippi, Mississippi River's a rampaging monster. A little 12-foot flood wall isn't going to protect you. The worst flooding that ever happened, that they know of, you had the Mississippi River swamped about 500 square miles of Iowa. Three sides of Henry County were ravaged by the river. Highway 218 was either swamped, what would have been Highway 218, was either swamped or crossed five times. Now, are the forces that caused that to happen with us now? No. It's interesting history. Go to the U of I archives, look up Frank Leverett. But on the other hand, you do have a risk that nobody's looking at. When they redid the railroad bridge, they left three old piers in addition to the new piers that are there. Railroad right-of-way in Illinois acts as a dam. If you have a situation where you have a winter that's dry at first but very cold, the ground freezes deep, then you have snows on par with 1936, and a rapid melt with tornatic storms early in the spring, and an ice jam on the river, your flood wall is not going to protect downtown Burlington. It's just not going to happen.
Can I remind you one detail?
Yeah.
Since, okay, I mean, since this is already, we've already conversated about this, but, you know, we're leveraging this money. You know what I'm saying? Hold on, just let me, just let me say this again. We know that we've got flood problems. The Mississippi's not moving. You know what I'm saying? That's the thing, I understand exactly what you're saying, Leon, but, but it's not like you're, you're not getting what, we're leveraging this money, the Mississippi's not moving. The old way that we fight the flood, it's really tough on the men, we can't count on it. This is just so much better, and we're already spending the money on the sewer separation. So I mean, come on, man, get on, get on board with me, Leon. Get on board with me.
That's not, that's not the end of it. I, I keep hearing how we're, I, I don't know where the plan is, who has it, whether it's in the city manager's desk, at Chamber of Commerce, I don't care. But the next step is doing what Dubuque did. Their riverfront improvements and flood wall, what they admit to is $420 million. That's a lot more than you have admitted to. And I think if they were honest, it'd probably be half a billion, that's with a B upward. We don't have that kind of money. The best thing you can do along the riverfront, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, bridge piers, boat docks, and intermodal facilities as in grain loading facilities. Everything in the floodplain otherwise should be gone.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience?
Rebecca Rosales, 102 Melrose Court, Burlington, Iowa. I've heard you guys state that you can take funding from other parts of the city and put it into other projects. So my idea is, why can't you, there's so many vacant houses around here, why are they not either boarded up and, you know, the order told a certain time to either fix them up or tear them down? And why are people just trying to beautize the riverfront? There's a beautiful city here, full of vacant homes, crime, darkness, and we've got to fix the city up before you start putting big projects in. They did this in Minot, and I'll tell you right now, they have two parking garages sitting there, half done. $6 million wasted. The people are now paying for it. 27% increase in property tax. I don't think anybody here wants their property tax going up that much, honestly, including you guys. And what we've got to do is beautify what we already have here. Either board those houses up and give them a certain time to fix them up, tear them down and rebuild. If you want to put a splash pad, put it where the kids are, not down on the riverfront. The kids are in the middle of the city, the poor kids, you know, the kids that can't get, they don't have transportation to get down the riverfront. Give them something to do, you know, in the areas that these kids are, are living in. Melrose Court, I want any one of you to drive down there, even today. Those kids are using broken toys. They don't know how to play. They bust up everything they have, leave it in the middle of the road, throw trash all over the place. Anybody I call in the city, take care of it, to include their landlord. What can we do about this? They're a nuisance. The drug dealing that goes on over there, horrible, smoking pot right in broad daylight on the front stoop, I smell it, comes up to my house. My kids don't need to smell that. I can't stand the smell of it. If I wanted that, I would have moved to Denver. They have a children's hospital there, too. You know, I don't want to smell it. And we need to come together, like I said previously, as a community, and beautify Burlington. What I've heard about this place, it was beautiful before. There's a lot of genuine people here that really want to beautify this city. And so I'm trying to get a, you know, a, a community watch program going, that we can go out, a couple people get together and just take walks up and down the road, drive your vehicle up and down the road. You see something happening, record it, report it. You know, but we've got to do something with the city that's not going to cost us, I don't have money to be putting into extra taxes for all the beautifying, when we could be doing it with already what's there. I mean, there's homeless people, yeah, I understand, there's homeless for a reason, but some of these homes, if their landlord isn't going to do anything with them, they're, they're a eyesore. Nobody's going to move here, even if you did build up the riverfront, because that's the riverfront built up. And then, like the other gentleman said, very good, very good reasoning, you're building up a flooded area, a flood zone. It's going to flood again, whether anybody thinks it's not, or whatever, it will flood again. You're going to lose everything you put there. Everything that gets put there's going to be lost. They put a splash pad in North Dakota, pipes froze, just like the container said. Pipes froze, it costs a lot of money to fix it. So I mean, there's just a lot of things that are more prioritized and should be prioritized than to try to beautify a riverfront. And I understand, it should be beautiful, the whole city should, but there's just so much here we've got to do first, as a community. And the first thing is, get rid of the crime. You know, we've got to all work together to stop what's going on. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Christina Robinson, 1200 Osborne. I kind of want to say something about, like, touch on what she said. Crime is an issue in this, in this town. It really, it really, really is. And I try to stay as neutral as possible, considering that my cousin, Jordan Smith, was a police officer in this town, but then I also have, I've been affected indirectly by every murder in this town. Every one. My best friend, three years ago, her mother walked outside of her house to find her boyfriend dead. She was on her way to work. She works at GE, I mean, not GE, she works at the ammunition company. I was just comforting another one of my best friends two weeks ago because her nephew was shot beside her, behind her sister's house. Something does need to be done in this town, but I really don't, I think policing is one thing, we do need better training, we do need better police officers, but I think it, for me being a girl that, a woman, who was trained up in the church, and I preached on this on Mother's Day, you have to train up the children the way you want them to go. We need more programs for children. We need, that's what ultimately needs to happen. That's the reason why the splash pad was great. That's the reason why the concert thing was great, because you're giving people something to do. People are, people are bored. I mean, I'm not saying that, what, I don't know the thing, whether it was idle minds or whatever, or idle hands or whatever, it, it's just, people need something to do in this town. And people need more positive things for children in this town. This, this town needs, these children get so lost, they don't have anything, they don't have any positive influences, they don't have any, any things like that. We need to focus on the children, and I, I just think that's, I just think that's how you solve the problem. You can't solve a problem after the fact, after they've turned bad, after they, you have to get them while they're young and change their mindset. And you can't keep telling, these kids are bad. You can't. And if you have someone feeding negative energy into you all the time, that's where the problem is. These kids need more positive. Thank you.
Gary McPherson, 2111 Summer Street. This is the...
Wait, sir, address the council.
I'm sorry. I'm talking to them, but I'll address, I'll look at you guys. This is my first time that I've been to a city council meeting. I'm here because of...
Rebecca?
She posted something on the Neighborhood Watch, I think it was, about a city council meeting tonight, and she was concerned and passionate about some things that are very important to her, and I felt a need to come down and just to support her. And I'm just thankful for all the people that have gotten up and spoken and are here with compassion, concern for this, our city, my city. And it's sad to see that this place is not packed with community, citizens of this community, hearing, maybe it's in the news, probably in the news, newspaper, I don't read the newspaper, but I'm just so thankful that people come here and being passionate about their concerns, and I'd like to see more people involved at the meetings.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Teslin, I think going in.
Couple of quick reminders. We have our Burlington Trash Drop Off on Wednesday, October 25th, from 10:00 to 6:00 PM. Just a reminder, two locations, Grace United Methodist Church at 1100 Angular and Oak Street Baptist Church at 1303 Oak. We have information through the Development Department or on the website and Facebook pages, but a reminder, similar to citywide cleanup, not accepting appliances, batteries, TVs, electronics, but general household items that you need to get rid of. So hopefully, people can make it out to that on Wednesday, the 25th, 10 to 6, at those locations. And then later that night, we have our community workshop in Charette at the Public Library for the Brownfield Plan. This area-wide Brownfield Plan for the downtown, going to review plan objectives, purpose, the market analysis, and then the community vision exercise, talking about some catalyst sites for the downtown area and potential reuse, redevelopment of those sites. So I encourage people to come out Wednesday, October 25th, at 5:30 at the Burlington Public Library, give their input, see what's going on, but we hope that some people can come to that as well and, I guess, want their input on downtown, where we're headed in some of the redevelopment of going on down there.
Antoinette?
Of course. All kinds of fun stuff going on this week and weekend. We've got the Burlington Lunchtime Chamber Music Series, which is on the third Wednesday of every month. That is at First United Methodist Church. It is from 12:15 to 12:45. It's free, open to the public. I bring my lunch, I'm the only one who eats there. It's just a little weird, but, you know, everyone's encouraged to come, bring their lunch and eat. There's a guitarist that's going to be playing this Wednesday. We also have the CSO, Southeast Iowa Symphony Orchestra, has their concert on the 21st at the Capitol. I'm pretty sure there's still time to get some tickets for that. That's at 7:30. I don't know, there's all kinds of stuff going on, but those are the two that stick to my head right now.
Becky Anderson?
Well, I wanted to say something to Rebecca because I moved to town, to this town 20 years ago, and I think it's a beautiful town, and we didn't agree on this other, it doesn't matter, but it's just that I like your passion for the city, and I hope we can be worthy of you.
May I approach?
No meeting next Monday.
Small things in life.
I have nothing at this time.
But you reserve the right. City Manager, James?
We started the leaf pickup today, right? So, uh, those, those who have leaves in their yard, you have six weeks to get rid of them at the curb side. Either in bags that have been purchased or in your garbage containers. Your day for pickup is the day after garbage is picked up for your location. Again, that will go for about six weeks. One of the things that is, needs to get done, we've been talking about for the last couple of months, is auditorium and getting a contract with AMF. That, I know I had a question asked about whether, why that wasn't on the agenda for tonight. Well, it had to get, we had a tentative lease or, or agreement between the two entities, but our attorney hadn't had a chance to really look at it, and we just got comments back from him and got some replies back to him based off of that before getting a... We haven't gotten a revised contract to AMF to make sure that they're okay with what, what he's adding to it, and whether we might have to have a couple more rounds of that. So we do plan on having that at the next work session, which has been pointed out is not next Monday, but the Monday after, and then with action scheduled for November sixth. I didn't have anything else. I don't know if anyone had a, nope, that's it.
Okay, um, I want to say that we are, again, aware that our town has been tested. And that's what crisis and tragedy does sometimes. It'll test your town. And we've been through other tests as well, but this is, this is definitely something new. So again, for those that are observing and everything didn't run to your satisfaction and, you know, run perfectly, again, this is, uh... We were tested, we were tested, and we're still, we're still going through that process, so we're just asking everybody to be patient as we get through this together. I just want to say that it's, when it comes to certain things that are wanted in the community, um, I want to encourage people to rediscover Burlington. And I know, I've been in this town all this time, and I've seen it all. There's so much stuff to Burlington, and I, you know, I know that the kids need stuff to do, and they do, they do. But we've got some of the best parks in, in the state of Iowa, and they, they don't get used. They hardly get used. I, I would just encourage people, again, those of you that, that do say, well, the kids need something to do, I would say it starts with the families. Some parents, take your kids out. I've got a family right now that have been in this town for, that's no kidding, they've been in this town for, I think, twenty years. And she said, after she saw the video of a lot of the stuff that was in Burlington, she said, I didn't realize most of this stuff was here. She hadn't experienced it. And they went out and they're rediscovering Burlington, Iowa, and she said it's really been awesome with her and her kids coming together. It's just been fantastic. So I would just like to encourage people to do that. We can't get a knee jerk reaction and say we've had some, some difficult times and that Burlington's a terrible place. That's not true. That's not true. I've been in Burlington for forty-eight years, and I'm telling you, Burlington's a wonderful place, and a lot of people that come to Burlington from without, they recognize how wonderful Burlington is. It's not perfect. Burlington's not perfect. We've had our issues in Burlington. We, we do. We've had tragedy in Burlington. Nothing ever runs smooth. So, uh, but in every, every family, it's like that. In every family, I don't care how good your family is, you've got a crazy Uncle Joe or a crazy Uncle Shane, you know what I'm saying? And you have to deal with tragedy, and you get tested as a family, and it happens the same way in cities. So I'm just encouraging everybody that we, uh, that as we go through this testing, that we, that we come together as a community. I'm starting to see that in a lot of areas. I hope it, I hope it continues. I know that's what you're doing, to make a difference. So again, to the, to you in the back, Hunt, I'm sorry about you having some misfortune in this city, because it's not like that on a regular basis, I'll tell you. It's wonderful people here in this town. It really is. So again, just to be encouraged, Burlington, the sky's not falling here. We are going through some tough times. We've got some people that are dealing with some serious, serious situations. That being said, it's a beautiful town, the beautiful people here, you guys know. It's why you're still here, because you know some of the best people in the world are right here in Burlington, so that's all I've got. Actually, I had more, but I'll stop right there before I say something silly.
All right.
I moved, we adjourned.
Second? It's been moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote us out.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay, this means adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, folks. Thank you, customers.